Welcome to the Selectmen's meeting for the Town of Acton, Maine, for November 20th, 2019. First item is salute the flag.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited, and justice.
Okay. Town Administrator, weekly update. Jen, the floor is yours.
All right, not too many things tonight since we have a shorter meeting. First thing, I just wanted a quick update on the staff meeting. I just wanted to thank you guys for doing that today. I think that it went well and then it gave everybody a chance to communicate, so we look forward to the next one. Next thing that we have kind of tied into the staff meeting, just a bit of a clarification that we, in regards to paying staff for days that we close, based on the personnel policy, it does say that employees may be excused from work due to reasons outside of their control as determined by the Board of Selectmen, such as snow days, extended holiday breaks. Employees will receive their regular compensation, so this really refers to hourly employees. The memo that we sent out a month or so ago said that they would have to use PTO time for that. This policy clearly says otherwise, so for Thanksgiving in December, we'll honor that. And then when you guys get around to discussing the personnel policy, you can decide if you want to make any adjustments to that.
Sure.
We have a new Maine Municipal representative, not Lance. Lance hasn't gone anywhere, but we had a, remember we had a guy temporarily?
Mm-hmm.
So anyway, so he's reached out to me. He has, we have a, an action plan that is several months old now, that they never really followed up to make sure that we had done all of them. This, there's three or four pages here, and David, I'll send a copy over to you because it was probably before you were elected. Most everything is done on here, but he'll be here in 12:12 to go over each item, and I will let the department heads know that he and I will be touring the fire station and the transfer station at the same time, just to make sure these are done. And of course, I'll reach out to them ahead of time to confirm they're done. So, that's the 12th. Treasurer gave me just a little information from Maine Municipal. She wanted to let you know that in regards to workers' comp, the Town of Acton pays in about, paid in about $60,000 in workers' comp. That's between the municipal management, fire department, and the school, so that's everybody. We are getting back, a dividend check back in the amount of $4,589. That's based on the amount of claims, and they also value services that we use, what they call loss control, like online classes that we take or classes we go to, a value of $12.78. So together, the total benefits from Acton, they figure, is $58.67. So the more of those safety classes and types of things, these surveys that we finish in a timely matter, it all affects our workers' comp numbers, so that's why we're so persistent in getting all of that done. So, it's a good chunk back, not too, oh.
Yes.
So, if you could, on your way out, look at the sink in the first, what they call in the staff bathroom. The sink is, is about ready to come off the wall. Kind of looks like, you know, and I hate to reference children, but it looks like somebody's been hanging on it. It's not bolted to the wall very well, so I guess I'm looking for direction to see if there's something that we can do to get it to the wall, or Michelle printed off, you know, a couple of hundred-dollar vanities. I don't know if they'll, if the sizes, if it'll automatically fit, but it's, it's not safe there, the way it's looking. So, if you could peek at it and see if you think we can secure it somehow, or if just putting a vanity so it can sit on it might be an easier fix, I would appreciate that. A resident in town that very generously has offered the town, or somebody in the town, possibly the town as a last resort, a small snow blower. So if, if there's somebody out there elderly or disabled, or anybody that's just in need of a small snow blower, see me, and we'll see if we can set you up with it. If not, Jonathan might have an extra toy this winter. See. Now, last thing I have, short week this week, is animal control interviews. Friday is the deadline for the application. So far, I believe I have two, so I am looking ahead, because I do want to get rid of this phone.[287.12][287.12](laughter) Because it does ring, I think I keep saying that every week. It does ring if you're applying.
Yep.
So the deadline's the 22nd, so whoever wants to be my liaison this round, I'd really like to schedule interviews Monday or Tuesday. I wouldn't expect them to keep it over the Thanksgiving weekend, because, I mean, let's face it, at the end of the day, if they get a call, they're going to have to call me anyway, so I'll probably keep it through that week, but I'd like to get started on them.
What do you mean by, who wants to be the liaison? I am the liaison. We're not going to change the liaison, are we?
Oh, well, we, I mean, it was never really a liaison. We just, I mean, you just were that, you just sat in on it. I mean, you were that, we, you were, because Kim had a relative, and Ed had done it last time. We had just, there's no real liaison.
Yeah.
Right. I, I mean, general, but you're welcome to, so you want to?
I'll, yeah, I'm fine.
Do it again?
Want to do it again? Okay. So I'll, we'll discuss which day works better for you and I, and we'll get them in.
Yep. These new applicants, or?
Both new applicants.
Yeah, nice.
Yep. Okay, and then anyone to speak of the agenda? Yeah, that's all I have, short and sweet.
Formants have already been signed.
Formants signed, so do you want any changes to the agenda before I make copies for the public?
Paul seems to be signed. Can we just table those till next week, and we shorten this meeting up?
I got them all ready.
Hmm?
I just got them ready.
You got them all ready?
We have two.
Okay. And that's just, just a couple, and we can do those.
Be quick. Yep. Yeah, everything else looks fine.
It should be very quick. I just, yeah.
I'm sure it is, yeah.
They're short policies, and I've had everybody look at them, so.
Okay. So it's, yeah, so it's basically, it's going to stay the same. So do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda, November 20th.
I'll second that.
Moved in second to approve the agenda. Any further discussion? Call for, all in favor? All opposed? I'll wait till she comes back, so we can continue on.
Do we want to make a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting?
I was going to wait till she comes back, and everybody in the audience has a copy of the agenda.
Okay. She's trying to move us along.
That's right. Yeah, I want to take a couple seconds. Let's see. Let's see. Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting, November 13th.
Moved in second to approve November 13th's minutes. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor? All opposed? Department heads committee chair updates. Do we have anyone?
Good evening.
Evening.
I was asked by the warrant finance committee, back in, I think we had a meeting in July, organizational meeting, I think, or something, is chair, would I have direct access to MMA? And I failed to ask that question, and people have asked me since. If I've asked that question, I believe I know the answer, but I want to hear it, if I could.
You can. In the past, we have had all questions that go to MMA, go through the town administrator first.
Okay.
Well, legal, I just wanted a clarification. He has access, he can have access to Maine Municipal on the website, and the resources is just not legal. There's a big difference.
Right.
And I mean, so there's lots of publications, and documents, and sample this, and sample that, you know what I mean?
Yep.
There's lots of stuff on there that-
You can get to their website.
Yes.
You just can't get answers, like if you have question, legal questions.
Well, legal, and that's their calling, yeah.
Yeah. No, I'm fine. I just, I just was asked-
That was, that was done, boy, seven, eight, nine years ago.
Right.
So, they weren't getting-
I remember it was done when Cryzak was here.
Yes, it was. And it was done so they don't, so the legal department up there doesn't get, like, four or five different people calling with the same question.
Yep.
Or, or however.
No, I appreciate that.
Yep.
And we'll happily send anything over.
Yeah.
We're going to do send it to me.
Yeah, I don't think we've ever stopped anything from going out.
Yep. But I, I was asked to ask the question as the chair. I need to ask it.
Yep.
The other thing is, Ed, is about conversation the other day.
Yes.
I have read the warrant and finance committee ordinance, and I do not see a thing in there that says that we couldn't have that meeting.
Every, everything that the ordinance says on it, says to address a warrant.
No. No.
Let me pull it up. So this is what the board referenced when I was part of their conference call. So it says that, so part one, the Acton warrant and finance duties. So there are five things listed here. The warrant and finance committee is an advisory board. The committee shall review all proposed warrant articles, so that one. After due consideration and study of proposed warrant articles, number three, the committee may also provide non-binding recommendation to warrant article authors. The committee shall provide recommendations to the selectmen. So those are the five duty, or four duties listed out as what the warrant and finance is duties, what they have the authority to do, as the board interpreted it. You go on to read organizational, like, in meetings, it's all just about who's going to be on the committee, what a quorum is, but they believe those were the five duties of the warrant and finance.
I appreciate what you're saying, Jen, but in C, for example, when you continue reading that, it is proposed warrant articles.
But there was no proposed warrant articles.
Excuse me. And what this meeting was, was for capital improvements in what the departments were going to propose to be warrant articles.
Discuss all of that. I simply read them the four as they asked me to, okay?
Okay.
I mean, it starts, I mean, it says warrant articles, and that's exactly what the conversation that David and Ed and Kim eventually had, was that there were no warrant articles to be discussing or to be proposing. I mean, it's a matter of interpretation, I'm just-
Well, the, the departments, I would assume, at least historically, whether it's the fire department, or road department, or whatever, has always proposed what they would like to have the following year.
Right, but it comes-
And sometimes above and beyond their operating budget. And a perfect example is the fire department, because they have a very well-laid-out capital improvement plan, and so they have a timeframe and when, what they're looking at. But with that being said, that's fine.
One more thing, although, on that point, remember too, that it being a Board of Selectmen's warrant, so the board is going to decide if those articles even make it onto a warrant article.
I understand that.
So, you're, I'm just saying, so that could, you know, that could play part in it.
Very clearly. And I appreciate the interpretation. I have a different interpretation, so asking that, I would ask if that question be sent to-
Legal?
Legal. And whatever they say is what they say. I mean, it's like, you know, I had the conversation the other day, Ed, you know what I mean? It was a good conversation. There was no, no, nothing. You know what I mean? It was just a conversation.
Right.
And I did call the warrant and finance committee members. You, you would said that Jen would do the notifications, and then I figured, well, if they had any questions, why, or whatever, it'd be, I did call all the warrant and finance committee members, just as a, and I am scheduling now, according to the ordinance, on the 16th, at 6:15, a meeting to work on the warrant and finance committee policies. And that is in the ordinance that we-
What time would that be?
6:15.
December 16th, right?
December 16th, yeah.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
I need to check the calendar before you. I'm not, I got to look at the calendar.
Before you cast it in stone.
December is very full, so if you can just check with me after the meeting to make sure the room, somewhere's space is available.
Yeah. Well, we can always meet downstairs or something.
I believe it or not, I've got several days, both rooms are booked.
Yep, that's fine.
So I'll let you know right after the meeting.
Thanks, Dennis.
And, good evening. I just wanted to touch base on a couple of things. I've been, I've been away for a while because, for a couple of different reasons, so I'm just now trying to catch back up. Jennifer was, Jennifer, thank you for sending me the copy of the grant. I was really happy to see that that had gotten submitted, so I'm really excited to see what they say this time. So, I am much, I'm very hopeful that we're going to get that, so. And also, do we have a bridge update? Have we spoken to HEB?
No.
Has that, that hasn't happened? Okay. Road Committee has scheduled a meeting for next Tuesday to look at those three applications that we had talked about. So I do, at this point right now, have, I think, three or, I think there's going to be about four of us going out to look at the roads and see-
And to interrupt, I, I talked to Leslie yesterday, and what I asked her to do, because we were holding those three checks.
Mm-hmm.
And so to kind of expedite it, we're going to have a meeting on Tuesday, a road committee meeting, but before then, I asked her if she could have at least two or three of her members. I like to have a couple go out and overlook the sites before the meeting, so, because we got Tuesday night meeting, then Wednesday, we'd like to accept them, so they wouldn't give them a whole lot of time.
Yep.
So you guys are going to do that.
Yeah, so we're, yeah, we're, you know, we're expediting that to, you know, to make that-
Sounds good.
To make that happen, because I certainly, you know, don't want the road committee holding up their money, so. And I've been giving some thought about the controversy we've had with Article 43, and now, and just, you know, just some thoughts I have right now. The intention of the statute is clearly erosion control to protect the lakes. However, unfortunately, they didn't, they didn't, weren't clear on how, how we were supposed to implement it.
We discussed that the other day.
Right, we did.
And it was a good conversation.
Absolutely, absolutely. And even DEP, I mean, I had reached out for some guidance from DEP, and two individuals that I know from DEP seem to have differing opinions as to how to, how it should be implemented. And I think my, my question now is, have, in sending all of this to the attorney, have we sent that, that guidance from DEP to him also?
We have done nothing further, and I was going to update the board on it.
Okay.
No, as I, as I understand it, that at this point, we returned the applications that they had not seen yet, and they are going to be spending the month of December to work on the application, and also, Mr. Winchell has some ideas that he's going to share with the other two selectmen about a direction that he wants to see it go in, as far as getting another opinion.
Okay.
So, at this point, the, the board hasn't really discussed it.
So, I'd like to recommend that, you know, whatever, you know, if, when we do send it to the attorney, that we do send the, the two, the two emails from John McLean and Wendy Garland from DEP along with it, just to give the attorney a little more guidance as to, as far as, you know, what, what the state is, is thinking, and how they're conflicted also.
Well, I think, what, well, my concern is, and I think our town attorney, we've got his opinion, I think what I'm worried about is, I don't know of any other town that's actually gone and done this.
They haven't, and-
Okay, and that's what's kind of scary, to make sure that we are staying within the law.
Right.
And so, to do that, I think, really what we've got to go is go higher. We've got to go up to state level to make sure that we are complying with state law-
Right.
Without breaking it. And so, you know, if we can get some of the comments and write from Mrs. Garland, and who was the other?
It was John McLean was the other one.
Get a couple of those, we can, I'd like to put some questions together, something we can send up, and get an actual legal opinion from, you know, district attorney or whatever, making sure we, we're meeting the guidelines. I don't, I don't want to go through this whole process, I don't want to screw it up, but I, I want to make sure that when we go through the whole process of doing the new guidelines, like we'd spoke, you know, one of my ideas was, when we send the road committee out to do the inspections, to have you actually list of what you're going to be inspecting, so make sure those guidelines all, all work. And so, so I, I think we've got to get some questions together, and I'd really like to send something to the higher-ups to make sure that we are, because, I mean, our attorney, I'm sure he's meaning well, but, you know, we, we really ought to go to the people who actually created the law.
Yeah.
And make sure that we're applying.
And when I, when I talked to DEP, I mean, this, the statute actually says, DEP may institute rules, and then John McLean from DEP said, "Well, DEP has no intention to do that."
That's the problem happening, there's too many people, this person's saying this, this person's saying that.
Right, right. So I mean, it's, I mean, and I, I certainly agree, we, we need to, to get it right, and you mean, even if it takes a little bit more time to do that, then I think that we should do that, you know, definitely get it right, and, and actually-
Right, because right now is the perfect time to really get on it, because most of the work on these roads won't be happening until the spring anyways.
Right.
So if we can hash this out and get something done this winter, before springtime projects start again, I can't see why we can't have that, something like that done before town meeting.
Yeah. And also, just so you know, in my, in my conversations over the past with AWI, they've asked, they know that we're the first town to be doing it, so they've asked that when we finally solidify this process, to let them know, because they might be able to help other towns.
Well, that's, that's why I really want to make sure this is right.
Right.
Because we don't want another town or anybody coming-
Yeah.
Saying, "Oh, we're going to use Acton as a-"
We want to be a good example, but a bad example.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, and I totally agree with that, so I mean, it's-
The problem is, if you take some of these other towns, say they start jumping in, and then, you know, the crap hits the fan, and then, well, Acton's already started, and it's all on us, so.
Yeah. So, anyway, so I just wanted to throw that out there for what that was worth, and the road committee is at your disposal to, you know, to help, you know, do the research, you know, you know, our thought, you know, our thoughts, because, you know, we had, we do have a bit of experience in, in handling this so far, so I just want to, you know.
I think it'll work out pretty good, especially if we can do these guidelines, so that every road gets the same, you know, checkpoints.
Yeah.
That way, then, when you guys come to us with a recommendation, you know, we're all on the same page.
Right, right. All right. Sounds good. All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other department heads committee chairs? Okay, seeing none. Old business. We do have Article 43 applications on here. You wanted to-
Yeah, we're going to table that until, because we got the meeting on Tuesday going over those applications, so there's no, really no discussion tonight on that.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know that I had mailed those other ones back, so we're not, and we're not accepting any.
Okay. Policies to sign.
All right, so we have two that you guys got last week to review. This is the new one, so the, this is the daily deposit procedure. This was reviewed by the town's treasurer. The minor changes to it, we had the second, third, fourth paragraph down, it's, it used to say, "When the accumulated cash reaches an agreed-upon amount approved by the Board of Selectmen, the treasurer will personally transport." Now it just says that she goes, she'll go twice a week. Now that we're doing checks, we're scanning them, she goes a minimum of twice a week, depending on the amount of cash. And then the only other change in there was changing the bank, it used to say Sanford Institute for Savings, it says partners now. And then the state, it changed on, as far as how long we have to keep the checks, so it used to say, "The treasurer will store the deposited checks in the vault for a minimum of 90 days, maximum of 180. After the holding period, the treasurer will shred." And now I think it says-
60.
60 and 90, right?
Yeah, 90, maximum of 90 and a minimum of 60.
Right, so, that's it. But she's made those changes.
Okay. What's your wishes?
Make a motion, we accept, we, yeah, accept a policy of daily deposit procedure calls.
I'll second that.
Okay, moved in seconded to accept the policy. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor? All opposed?
I'll get a little more policy.
Oops, hang on.
So the other one that you've given last week to review was the computer use policy.
Yeah.
So this one's got a few minor changes in it. Under personal use, the second paragraph down, it says that users are not allowed to use town equipment or technology for personal business interests, for profit, nonprofit ventures, political activities, or other uses deemed by, I changed that to Board of Selectmen, to be, to be inconsistent with town business. The next change, anywhere that you see the word office manager, it got changed to town administrator, and then the, if you turn over the back, storing and transferring documents, last paragraph, "If there are, if there are questions regarding whether an electronic communication or other document is a government record for purposes of record retention law or is considered protective of private practices, check with the town administrator." And then the other, at the, under the internet, the very last paragraph there, it says, "Users may not at any time access inappropriate sites. Some examples of inappropriate sites include, but are not limited to, adult entertainment, sexually explicit material, material advocating for intolerance of people, races, or religion." It lists out pretty much everything there, and it goes on to say, "This prohibition is includes social media." I took that line out, because obviously, if we're using it for town purposes, or only for town, you've allowed that. And then the only other piece, other than the office administrator versus town, office manager versus town administrator, is under passwords, we added the sentence, so it says that, so the town administrator is responsible for assigning and maintaining computer passwords. Passwords should not be shared under any circumstances. If it's necessary to access an employee's computer, when she, he or she is out, contact the town administrator. Passwords will not be, will not be stored near the computer. And then we added the line, no, I don't know how Cheryl worded it, I didn't read it, but it should say, "No passwords shall be changed or can be changed without town administrator." You don't want somebody changing their passwords or their, so nobody can get in, right? So, other than that, that's it. So it was just really title changes, and the Facebook thing came out, and the password, no changing of any passwords went in.
Okay. What's your wishes?
Make a motion, we sign the computer use policy.
I'll second that.
Moved in seconded to sign the computer use policy. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor? All opposed?
You did.
I'm sorry?
No, I've been forgotten.
What's the matter? Your line's not on there?
No reminder.
What, what are we talking about?
Nothing.
Did we miss a line?
Yes. It's okay.
Must be, is it on the back?
Just ads.
Flip it over. Is it on the back page?
His name's on there, it's just a-
My name's there, it's just missing the line. I get confused.
So you weren't really forgotten.
Confused is the way to sign, that's-
Most of you were there.
This is kind of an inside joke from earlier today.
Yes, which we will not get into. Please, and thank you.
Yes. Yeah. Okay, is that it for?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Town report letters.
So I am missing, do we care about the politicians? I mean, we care about them, don't, I'm missing two politicians, Board of Selectmen, Fire Department, District Two, Road Commissioner, Acton Chapel, Youth Corps. What are you?
That's all you're missing?
Yeah.
That's not bad.
No, that's pretty good for-
Yes.
Ah!
It's okay.
Must be, is it on the back?
Just ads.
Flip it over. Is it on the back page?
His name's on there. It's just a-
My name's there. It's just missing the line. I get confused.
So you weren't really forgotten.
Confused is the way to sign that.
Most of you were there.
This is kind of an inside joke from earlier today.
Which we will not get into. Please, and thank you.
Okay, is that it for?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Town report letters.
So I am missing, do we care about the politicians? I mean, we care about them, don't- Missing two politicians, board of selectmen, fire department, District Two, road commissioner, Acton Chapel, youth corps. What are you-
That's all you're missing?
Yeah.
That's not bad.
No, that's pretty good.
This early in the season. And we know that the selectmen's one is being worked upon.
Yes, we do.
Should be done tomorrow.
Yes.
Okay, so who is the fire department liaison?
I am.
And it's a tough spot for Rick. So this is nothing on him, but somebody's got to whip something together. Kind of like the sheriff's department. I couldn't put that on. Saviny?
I don't think it'll be too much of an issue for Rick. I mean, he's been in the-
Been involved, okay.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
And then District Two?
You man.
I'll take care of that. I'll take care of District Two.
Wait a minute. Oh, yeah, no, because we got-
That would be District One sitting over there.
I'm thinking. Your father did District One or District Two? He did District One, okay.
Well, he did District Two, too.
He did District Two, too.
Yeah, but majority of the time, I think we had a conversation, it was Joe. So District Two and the youth corps. I'll reach out to them again.
Yep, okay. Very good. Audit for questions?
So we still have received none to date. She's scheduled for December 4th. Kim brought up a good point last week that, you know, setting a deadline. We tentatively set November 29th. That's going to give her two business days. So please, if you have questions, don't feel like you have to wait until the last minute. So she can start working on them. The sooner we can send them in, the better.
And we, I think we also had mentioned there, we'd come up with, if we only get a couple of questions, we're paying this auditor a hundred dollars an hour to come down here. I don't know what it is. Quite a bit of money, okay, to come down here and answer two questions. I'm thinking unless they all start coming in, a bunch of them, I'm kind of thinking that instead of paying her to come down here for two questions, if it's only two questions, that's something that we can get a written email and answer for a couple of questions.
We could, but I think it's not a bad idea. We've never, I think we only had the auditor come in once, haven't we?
Well, I know he came in shortly after I was, we trained, I was hired and we transferred over a bunch of stuff. I mean, maybe once or twice in the last 15 years. So I mean-
Yeah, it's not a bad idea to have them come in just to introduce themselves and the public can see them and-
Yeah, I was just thinking, you know-
I know it's expensive, but I think it's-
The concern, the concern, I guess, is not to interrupt you, is if, you know, let's just say she only gets one or two questions. Is, you know, is that, she doesn't want that to change that evening. I mean, she doesn't, they have a lot of towns. You know what I mean? It's not like you're saying, you're saying, okay, I'm going to ask the tax collector all these questions and I should be able to answer them because this is my job. She doesn't want, you know what I mean, if, I mean, let's just say that it takes 10 minutes to answer those questions just to start taking them to floor. Are you going to wrap it up after that?
I just assume not. Well, the idea is not to take any from the floor. That's why we want them ahead.
I know, but what are you going to do?
And I'm not going to take them from the floor. So, but I'd like to have her explain the audit, too, which is kind of nice, and the process that they go through.
No, that's a good idea. Yeah, I agree. I'd love to be involved in that.
That's the way you feel with that. That's fine with me. I just, I just thought it was more or less, she was coming down because, you know, certain people were asking over and over and over for, you know, to meet her. And we're not getting any questions.
I know. I was hoping we were going to get more questions.
And I just hate to waste their time to come down for two questions or something like that where we can answer that on email.
Yeah, but I think there's more to it than just a couple of questions.
Yeah, like you're saying, she can, you know, talk about-
Yeah. You know, I mean, it's quite a process to go through doing a town audit. And it's nice for the public and for us, too, to have-
We're going to accept the questions that do come.
Yeah.
And when they, and she'll be able to answer the ones that are right. And after that, we're just going to-
Right. Yeah, no questions from the floor. Because that's-
She can explain what she does.
We could ask some questions, yeah.
Yeah, maybe explain how the process works and all that.
Yep.
So if that doesn't, if that's not one of the original questions that come out, so, okay.
Right, yep. Okay. Sounds good. Okay.
They're on camera. They were barking when the phone rang, these two over here in the corner.
Okay.
Animal control phone. I didn't get it for a personal call.
No. See, I know it was animal control.
I didn't know what you were talking about.
Yeah.
Didn't even know I left, did you, David?
I was in discussion, so.
He was aware. I made sure he knew. Uh-huh, new business. Policies, first reading.
All right, so you get two this week. I was giving you three, but I haven't gotten the Freedom of Information one back from the attorney, and I feel like that's going to be big once we get it back because all those statutes and stuff, and I don't know what's changed, so. First one you get is the debit card policy, which the treasurer has a copy of and she will review for next week. So that's just the first reading. You could please look at that one. Thank you. The second one that you're going to get, because we're going alphabetical, is the demolition debris disposal permit. So this is the permit that they get downstairs. So I will make sure that Ken has a chance to review it. Essentially, we're trying to tie major demolition projects to permits and code enforcement.
Something that Bobby Mann ought to be taking a look at, too, in case he has any.
Um, yeah, Monday's the one, not, because it's transfer stations mentioned in it. So I'll reach out to him on Monday. This really was at the recommendation of our assessors. Because it's a, you know, when a lot of people will do inside, you know, tear down a bathroom or a kitchen, they'll never get the permit. You're not assessing properly. So by doing it this way, force, you know, it's a paper trail, because the permits go to the assessor after.
But, you know, the reason why I thought maybe Bobby ought to see it because, you know, with the price of demo going up and this and that, then maybe the fee may have to go up.
So these are, yeah, because these are free right now, so. Okay.
That was 2011 was the last time that one was reviewed. And the debit card one was just reviewed last year, so that shouldn't be too bad.
And I did skip, just so you know, we skipped the conduct of elected officials. I'm looking at Cheryl so she can, the conduct of elected officials, because you had just signed that one.
Just did, yeah. It was signed after July this year. Okay. Resignation?
So Sarah Hewitt, my deputy of four years, announced last Friday that she was giving her two-week notice. She has been offered a job for the town of Alfred as the town clerk. So she is taking that position. Her last day will be next Wednesday officially. She is going to stay around on Fridays to do some temporary work just in the month of December while we go up to the hiring process.
So we'll be putting out for applications for that?
Tomorrow.
Yep, yep. It's too bad.
It is.
We'll miss her.
We will certainly miss her. Sarah has been an asset. And, I mean, soon I will, I just-
I hate to be a training-
I'm going to get a map of York County.
I mean, I hate to be a training ground for all these people, but everyone that's left here now-
No, most of them have gone about three or four years. So, because April's in Sanford, Lauren's in Bitterford, Shelley is in Kennybunk.
They'd be the left here to become the top person somewhere or right close to it, so, yeah.
I'd say we're doing a pretty good job in our office. So anyways, we wish her well.
Yep, exactly. So, okay. And the well at the sports field, I asked to have this put on. I had a conversation two nights ago with-
Brian Streeter.
Yeah, that would be him. Brian Streeter, who put the well in from Streeter Well Drilling. The well is in. It's complete. It just needs to have the electrician finish his side of it, which I don't know who-
I gave them the name of our town electrician, and he promised to treat them right. I never heard anything back after that, so I don't know who they're using.
Actually, if you could get a message to the-
Chair?
The chair of the rec.
Saying?
The electrician needs to contact Brian before he opens the box to go in there and do the wiring. It's quite a system that he put in. He went down, I think he's down 300 feet with the well.
They got a bunch of water, don't they?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Thirty gallons a minute is what they hit. I think they must have tapped into the spring that goes into Wilson Lake. But, yeah, 30 gallons a minute is what they have. He's got it throttled back to 15 gallons a minute, so they, most likely they'll never run dry. The entire system is in the well, which I never knew was anything you could possibly do. I've always known you put the well in-
It's a variable speed pump in the well.
Yeah, but everything is in the well, including the tank. The pressure switch is on the top, I guess, but everything is contained, so there's no problem with anything freezing. You don't have to, there's a yard hydrant on the top of it. So once it's worked, once it's in, and the power is to it, summer, winter, zero out, 95 degrees out, well open, the hydrant is going to work.
Turn it up and go.
Which the tank, I guess, is just a, you know, just shy of six inches around and like 10 feet long that's inside the tank.
Small expansion.
Yeah, instead of having the expansion tank in a building somewhere, so. So he did, he did the whole job. He treated the town extremely right on it, price-wise. So, just, like I say, just needs to get the electrical hooked up to it, which would be great. He said there's absolutely no problem filling that ice rink with what's there.
Oh, good. Yeah, 30 gallons a minute.
Yeah, yeah, so, you know, probably do it over a day, you know, a couple of days, just so you can be there and watch it, but-
It'd be good to do it anyways, flush it out a little bit.
Right, yeah. Yeah, I know last year, last year I filled it with one of the fire trucks. The first couple of loads, it had kind of a, not a rusty look, but yeah, it had a little tint to it. Even though the tank was a plastic tank in the fire truck, but still, you get some discoloration to the water. So this ought to be really nice and clear. And the nice thing is they'll be able to go down there, you know, January, end of January, February, top it off, you know, smooth it out.
Right.
So it ought to be a good setup, so. But I was pretty impressed when I heard that everything was in there, because I'm wondering, okay, I know how wells work. You could have a tank, you could have pressure switches and all that stuff. So you end up having a building, you have to heat some sort of a little shack or something. But now everything is inside the tank and inside the well itself, so. But he did stress that there's some stuff in there that you could easily go astray unless you know what you're doing hooking it up, so.
I sent an email and CC'd you guys.
Yeah, okay, so. But that's that. I just wanted to thank, thank both the rec committee for going through with that and getting that done, and thank Brian for all the hard work he did getting that put in. So that's all I have on that one. Okay, public comment. Anyone for the public? Come right up. Hang on, Dennis, we had one ahead of you.
Clock's ticking.
Let's not fight.
No, it's not ticking yet.
All right, sorry.
I have three things, so hopefully I don't run out of time. And it's about the road commissioners. And yes, I've talked to both of them about it before I'm speaking to you guys. We've made it through the summer with both road commissioners. And the work that Will has done on his end of town and working with Joe LaTerno is very commendable. And I've heard nothing but positive about the job that Will's been doing. When it comes to Joe LaTerno, is the ones that were around during budget time will know that I had an issue with paving East Shore Drive. And like I said then, and I still say I'm not the road commissioner, he did that. He fixed up at Horn's Pond. Did a nice job up there. And he shimmed down there in the harper. He has fixed the bridge. He has the rail, you know, the cement railings, and he replaced the guardrails. And I see now where the water was icing up down there all last winter. He's got that all cleaned out.
That one there was a joint effort.
That's fine, but-
Him, myself, and Dave Langley.
Yeah.
So I went down and phoned him.
But I'm just saying, he's the road commissioner, and I'd like to give him credit for what he's done this year.
Yep, done a great job.
I think the taxpayers have gained immensely by the work that both of them have done this summer. Those are those two things. I still got a few seconds, right?
Yes.
I don't know if she wants me to do this, but I am very proud that my granddaughter is, Mike Corey hired to help Virginia with the filming. And I would like to thank the selectmen for allowing this because, this is my opinion, the town of Acton offers very few services to the teenagers in this town for work, nothing like it used to. And for those who don't know this, she is also on the junior fire department. So I'm a little prejudiced saying she's a great kid. And all her personality isn't like mine, so hopefully she'll be pretty successful.
I would say probably.
Look at that, two minutes and 59 seconds, Dennis.
And she's behind the camera tonight, so.
Yes, welcome.
Yep, thanks, Dennis.
Seems I picked a good night to come and talk about what I came to talk about. My name is Jeff Donio, and I came to talk, sorry, I came to talk about Article 43 tonight. Article 43 cites 23 MRSA 3106, wherein Part E reads, "The private road or bridge is maintained by a road association organized under this subchapter or Title 13B." Now, Title 13B is the organization of nonprofits. In this nonprofit, there's certain rules that you have to follow to maintain that status. Under 3101, there are also certain rules that you have to abide by to maintain that status. I have a Superior Court, a Supreme Court judgment here just about a road association in Cape Elizabeth. This is case number YOR 13518, is decision number 214 ME 416. And this is just the beginning. This is a 14-page decision. So Justice Silver writes, "Stephen M. Brett appeals from a judgment following a jury trial in the Superior Court, York County, in favor of local road commissioner Victor Sunshine on Sunshine's complaint to recover several years' worth of unpaid assessments for maintenance on a private road. Brett asserts that the road association failed to strictly comply with the requirements of the Private Ways Act 23 MRSA 3101 through 3104, and that it therefore lacks the authority to collect assessments." They vacated the judgment, and they ended up ruling in favor of Mr. Brett because of this. Okay? So the application for Article 43 asks for information from road associations to determine eligibility under the statute which includes bylaws. Who, if anyone, is checking to see if these bylaws comply with Maine's statute? The ruling I read is the rule of law handed down by the Maine's highest court. Neither the town's lawyer interpretation of law nor the selectmen's interpretation of law should have any bearing. If road associations do not strictly comply with the Maine Private Road Act, they have no authority to collect assessments, then they would not be in compliance with subsection 3106, Part E. Therefore, would also be evident that they should not be eligible for money under Article 43. This case law should be part of the determination of eligibility of Article 43 if the road association is not a nonprofit under Title 13B. Now, I've been, I've been doing this now since 2017, a year longer than Article 43. I've been dealing with road associations and the laws. My advisor lives in Fayette, okay, and she's been doing this for 23 years. She's pretty much an authority on road associations and the laws and how they apply. And I see you, after listening to discussion tonight, I see that you're trying to do things right. And at this point, I'd like to reach out to her, if you like, and have her contact you.
So is this an attorney from Fayette, or what is her title?
She is, she's, right, she's a private person, but she goes to the legislature and tries to update the laws regarding private road associations. At this point, you need four signatures to form a road association. And she feels that because there's only three people on her road, she's being treated unfairly. So she's trying to change the law. She was pivotal in the laws that are, that are in place now. Because this started, and these laws were basically in place in 2004. And they've been updated since that time. A lot of the updates were because her speaking to legislatures in Augusta. And so if you like, I'll have her-
It's left to the board.
Reach out to you.
Do you have, do you have some documentation you want to leave with us? And we can send it along with other paperwork we're sending to our attorney?
So what's your biggest concern, Jeff, is that they're not actually meeting, the associations are not meeting the bylaws? They're not meeting the bylaws?
Their bylaws are not in compliance with the Maine Private Ways Act.
Now, I have to ask, so you say they. Have you reviewed each one of the applications the board have accepted? Are we only talking about tattles?
No, I'm saying that I know that at least one of these-
But it's something we should look at when we're doing the application process.
So this is what I read.
The road committee has, I thought.
And on top of this is the, sorry, on top of this is the case number and that, so you can look it up. This is 14 pages. You can review this case. You can send it to your attorney or whatever. And again, I'll reach out to this woman and see if she wants to help you in implementing-
We'll send that along to our attorney, and he can use that as a highlight just to look it over and see. Yeah, go ahead and give it to Jennifer.
Thank you. So this is the case law. This is a copy I can keep?
Yes, ma'am.
So what you're saying is Article 43, because the road association may not qualify because of a bylaw.
Right, if their bylaws do not correspond-
But if it does correlate, it's-
Then you're fine, then, good to go, then. Because like me, they took my voting rights away. And number, number four in voting under 3101, it says that each parcel gets one vote. Unless it's in your bylaws, you get two votes. You can't take somebody's vote. There's no exceptions to this rule, okay? So this is what happened to me. So now I feel it's extortion. They're holding my property.
That's between you and your road association.
That is, that's right.
We're not going to get into that here.
No, I understand that, but I just, I wanted to raise my concerns. And I appreciate your time, and I wish you all a happy holiday. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for the info. We will pass that on.
Just for some clarity, we, the application asks for proof of the association's been set up properly. So bylaws are included. We have no way of knowing whether they're following the bylaws or not.
So we're looking for the, we're looking for the attachment that they, what does the question say? I don't have the article from-
Says, "Do you have proof of proper formation of a road association under the road association statute?"
Typically, what they send are copy of their bylaws, copy of the, um, the call to meeting, and there's a series of things, and a copy of the minutes. So those things are all submitted-
That's what the road committee would be looking at every time it comes through, so.
Right, but what she's, I mean, but we, but we're not comparing it to, what does it say? Read that last sentence again.
Yeah, we have not compared it to the actual-
The road association statute.
So we're not comparing it to the road association statute.
There's a pamphlet that tells you how to set up a road association.
And I say we, road committee, selectmen involved, when we have the attached bylaws, we're assuming they follow that. And I think what he's saying is that they're not following that one, so who's checking that?
He's talking about a nonprofit. You've got statutes-
He's talking about a nonprofit, you've got statutory ones.
There's statutory and there's nonprofit, yeah.
So, I, I don't know if there's a difference when it comes to what he's talking about or not.
But I think what Liz is saying, I mean, she's saying that we're, we're confirming that the bylaws are attached, but we're not confirming that they meet-
Meet.
Right, the statute, so. And that's what he's saying, is that they don't.
Right, and there's no way for us to know whether they're, they're-
Whether they're allowing somebody to vote or not, right, right.
So this would be in their bylaws, because they, they go by their bylaws, and if they're, what I'm saying is that if their, their bylaws don't correspond to the statute, not just how they form, but the whole statute, thirty-one oh one through thirty-one oh four, consists of the Maine Private Ways Act.